All right, it's Monday, August 9th, 2021. It's about 10 after 4:00. And we're going to start the Town of Sangarville's special meeting. It is a special meeting, so do you guys want us to just go right through the pledge of allegiance for today? Okay. There's no open session because there's no one here. So really, this is preparing for the town meeting. And so that takes us right to item 3, old business, preparing for town meeting. Officially set the time and date and place.
Okay. I've had a couple more people complaining because we're having a Grace Bible. Did you receive that email when I CC'd it to you?
We received, I know, I received one from Diane.
Did you receive my response?
Yes, yes.
So then you're all caught up on what I feel on this. The other issue is, I just pulled up the Scottus County, we're on the substantial list again for indoor gatherings.
Oh, interesting.
So we could get next right at the last minute, depending on which way this thing goes.
Well, I told somebody we could go outside. I mean, that would be our other option.
Well, if it's not pouring rain or, I mean, that's not really a good alternative.
I'm just kidding. But the side of it is, is, yeah, I would. I wouldn't deal with it because what are you going to do? I mean.
Well, if we are allowed to have a meeting, we would have a meeting.
Correct.
But if we can't have a meeting, then we really don't have to cancel it because we can't have it.
You're still allowed, you're still allowed to have it, you just all have to be masked.
And you have to be six feet.
Yeah.
And you have to, how many, so what, six feet in mass for the size of that room? You're going to have to figure out how many people you're allowed to have in there.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So, and you end up with a number that...
Then someone pulls their mask down to talk.
Yeah, and you can't enforce it.
Nope.
And somebody's going to come in and won't put their mask on.
They're going to say, "I'm vaccinated, I don't need it." And then they're right.
No, it doesn't matter.
No, but I mean, in terms of the law, it doesn't, or the governor, but
Correct.
from their personal point of view, I wouldn't want to argue with them. So I agree, if it gets that thorny, we probably just will wait.
If it gets that thorny, you'll have to go to Grace Bible. We will have to, there are certain steps you have to take, all of them all off to make sure that we're...
Like a minimum, one person has to show up, have the meeting, adjourn the meeting.
And go.
Even in the event of weather, you have to do that.
Correct.
I'm aware, you were right about that.
Okay. So we're going to set it for Grace Bible Church.
Can we get rid of that word?
I know.
At Grace Bible?
Yeah, it's at the rec center or whatever the name of that is. It's not at the church.
Yeah, that, I, I did.
It is at the rectory, not at the church, right?
Correct.
Grace Bible Community Row, I don't know.
If that's the name of this one.
Whatever the name of that is. Maybe that will help.
Yep, 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 yep.
No personal care in this.
No, I know, but those kinds of stick out.
Some people see that, they're gonna keep going.
Yep, yep.
One thing, in your exchange with Diane, you, she mentions the fire department and the fact that it's not wintertime. And I personally, I've thought a lot about what we used to do with the fire department. And it seems kind of reckless. I mean, all these years, or for many years, we've had meetings at a fire department. We wouldn't even let somebody park their car in front of a fire hydrant. And we've essentially rendered our fire department almost useless.
Plus, you no longer have every fellow parking, so you may get people parking all over.
Well, the firemen would have to park on the street to try to get to respond to the fire. We've got all, we've got elderly people in there, some that don't walk that well.
Some firemen who's not at the meeting comes tearing in and we have...
Honestly, I suspect if we had this conversation with Chad, he'd say, "You're right, this is crazy. I can't believe I didn't let you do it." So for me personally, as long as I have won three, well, three votes, I would never do it at the fire department ever again. That's just, we got lucky that we never got toned out. And it isn't just Sangarville, we all know we have mutual aid. So if any one town has a fire, we've created a dangerous situation. So it's either at the rectory or at the Gilford School or something like that.
Which is out of town.
Yep. So I, you know, anyway, that's my feeling on that.
Yeah, I mean, as I pointed out, we only have so many options and none of them are anywhere near as good as the one we chose.
Plenty of parking, there's no stairs.
You got the...
It's a nice building.
You got the, the, you have...
It's warm in the winter.
You have nice, nice chairs so people can actually sit through a meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the room's spread out, you don't even have that at the fire department. We would never be able to hold it there again in terms of COVID because you can't spread out.
Right, right.
If you have a big turnout, you have people lining the back wall, which would be a big no-no.
And last year's meeting was right on the cusp of the COVID outbreak. Everybody was talking about it. We even had some people who were concerned about it. At that point, our meeting was legal. And our turnout was very good there, considering all that was going on.
Within three or four of the previous year.
Yeah, yeah. So, and I don't, it really aren't many alternatives, so.
No. I didn't get any response to that. But if you take a vote to hold it at the Grace Bible Community Row at 6:00 PM on August 19th,
I'll make a motion to do what you just said. Do you want me to say it again?
Ezra.
Ezra.
Whatever, second.
All in favor? We're all in favor. Number two is approve the ordinances. Shoreland zoning, fire department, active military excise tax exemption. I think we ought to address these individually, right?
Yes.
Okay. Shoreland zoning. We had a change here too, didn't we?
We had a change after we had a public hearing. The first change was, we had left out a type of district which we have in our town. That type of district is basically bogs and marshlands that are not nationally labeled as wetlands. It's just a definition of what type of land is and if there's anybody who's going to say we don't have bogs or marshes in Sangarville.
I personally don't, so.
And while we have been deliberating and updating our ordinance to meet state standards, the state has passed another requirement that once you apply for a site to be worked on, you have to take before and after pictures. So you send before pictures in with your notice, you take after pictures within 20 days of completing your project. This is not something that any of us discuss, but this is something we have to have in there in order to meet state requirements.
I don't see where it's a bad thing, Amy.
And I, I called MMA and said, "Okay, so what happens if this doesn't pass?" And they said, "Oh, well, that could be bad." But basically, they said, "The state will send you an ordinance to say, 'Here's your ordinance. This is state law, this is what you're going to have.'" I called the state and they said, "Well, that won't be the first thing we do. The first thing we do is we'll come and we'll talk to everybody and explain to them why this is that, this is the way it is. And then we'll send you..."
Then you'll get your ordinance. And we'd just keep advancing it every time we have a town meeting until, I mean, as we would do with any state minimum. I guess maybe there's an area we would buckle around.
But on the line, I think you'd be better off, even if we don't pass it following the state minimum
Oh, yeah.
standards, because if you were to ever end up in court, you'd need to be able to justify.
It's still mind-boggling that you have to have an ordinance to follow law.
Well, yes, it does seem...
Yeah, I can think of all sorts of things that the municipality can't do because the state says it's illegal.
Right. I don't understand why this is different.
Yeah, okay.
Well, the state should probably send us one every year with its updates and we should give it to our planning board and say, "Here are the changes, make sure you know what they are," and keep moving. This is the way we have to do it, so, yeah.
So I, we're going to advance that shoreland zoning ordinance with the changes.
Correct. First, second. Do we need to vote on that now? Yeah?
We all vote in favor of that. The fire department ordinance.
We passed, we worked on that for almost a year. We turned it into, our lawyer, he gave it a standard approval. We just, we worked with the fire department on it, everybody's on the same page. We just need to approve it to go on the warrant.
So I'll make a motion to put the fire department ordinance of Sangarville on our account warrant.
We can just approve the warrant again.
True, true, true.
If you want to.
Yeah, just make sure I get all the signatures.
Okay, okay.
Any further discussion on the fire department? Okay, active military.
Oh, sorry, quick question.
Which one?
Shoreland zoning. Do you think we have to do this because where we tried to do something on our own in the past? And that's why we created our own ordinance instead of just following state?
Oh.
It's a question for after-town meeting for, but I'm just...
Because we had our ordinance, we had our shoreline ordinance.
That's what I'm wondering.
I wonder if...
No idea, but I mean, later...
I think it's almost because we had ponds and rivers and stuff in our ordinance. And that means most every town in Maine.
Every town.
Yeah, there won't be, maybe one, I don't, cannot imagine one. I would not take that bet.
So I don't know, I can find that out for you.
Well, I just, sitting here still trying to ponder why you leave this one. It's all right. It's on here, we're going with it.
It's government.
Yep.
Active military excise tax exemption.
We started to be using this ordinance that had some ambiguous language. And so we asked our town attorney to tighten it up and make it less ambiguous for us. So that's what he did and he moved the definitions around. He tightened some of the definitions, which is kind of what we wanted, but, and...
Well, it's just changing it to one vehicle, right?
Right, it's one vehicle.
That's really all we changed.
Right.
That was the upshot of all of our changes.
That's the upshot. I mean, if you look at what he did...
What he charges for.
I mean, we haven't, well, I don't think he charges for much of anything because I sent him the ordinance in word form so he could very quickly fix it.
Question, I don't see it on the warrant. I don't see it. I mean, I...
Really, really?
Yep.
Got our attention, Joey.
You're kidding me, right?
No, well, I don't, I mean...
No, it's not on there. R, not on my ear. All right. So it would read the same as the fire department.
Right, so it would be with, with between 17, 18, 19, 20.
It should be, yeah, right with 19.
It should be with...
Something happened, something else happened with 18.
Yeah, in 18, yeah.
I don't know why it happened.
It looks like it's, yeah.
It's dark.
So I will put it in between fire department and shoreline. And if we go through all of this and don't find anything else, I will run into the office and fix it so we have it in progress after we are done. That means everybody's approval. And you'll notice there is one other on here that is, was not on here for approval and that's property maintenance ordinance because we also had our lawyer look at that and we decided that his was too detailed to actually pass a town meeting. And because our current one is not detailed enough, we can't enforce it and are going to ask the town residents to repeal it so that we can work on a better...
Right.
And, and I saw that, but I saw that on the, when I read the last one that we read through, but is it on here?
Yeah, it's 19.
Oh, okay.
That one is.
Okay, okay, yep, yep, I see it.
I wonder if, and maybe this is just over, but recommended by the select board and the town attorney. The town's attorney says it's not enforceable, or he doesn't recommend that we enforce it based on its current.
I like that because it is...
In other words, we did a little due diligence and the way it ended now is useless.
I would, I think it would be beneficial to have a copy of what he sent us.
His opinion.
Yep, his opinion. So when it comes to a discussion, well, why are we doing this?
Yeah, we can reference it, yeah.
Then you have that to reference. This is what he recommends.
And we didn't think that would pass.
Well, and it, yeah, for now, we're better off to get right up what you got. If this is what you want to do, the planning board can move forward.
I will bring it, we don't need it in the town report.
No, 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 just for us to be able to...
Just as a reference tool.
Because some people are going to think we're anti-this ordinance. That is not the case at all. What we've all learned is that the thing is not enforceable. And it's a pain in everybody's butt because people want things to be taken care of and we can't take care of them. So, I get it.
Do you want to write that on there? To be repealed, comma, due to being unenforceable?
Well, I think, I think when this, this gets brought up for discussion, that'll be our opportunity. And plus, it's going to say, and the town attorney also thinks we need to do this, so we will share that with them. I think we're to the approval phase.
See the roads are combined, I like that.
Yep.
So, let's see. I've been thinking about people who might join the school board and/or the sanitary district, although I still haven't, I've got to reach out to Rick Hall. And I may have to knock on his door because I haven't got his number yet. Those are all business-related.
These are all going to change numbers so we can't sign the last page.
Oh, that's true.
Everything should be okay down through 13.
13. Did you, did you hear what Dale just said, right? Your signature page isn't going to work because you've changed the number of articles.
Which means I am going to have to go down...
You're going to have to add changed numbers when we sign it.
Yep. Verify the cemetery, verify... Well, I've been looking at the, we used to pass the cemetery article that just said that it authorized the select board to deal with cemeteries for disposal property for the town. And it was actually combined with the article that talks about tax-acquired property. It was one article, you know, it gave you guys the power to deal with everything and didn't, didn't list out, you know, larger set the fees and all of that with one simple... I don't know if they moved away from that because they decided it was, oh, it was so much simpler than...
Well, if you look at what some of these other towns do, I mean, they don't have a home visiting or articles we have. That'd be a good project for after-town meeting. Get it for next town.
But I just thought it was interesting because I was like, well, that was so much simpler and straight, more straightforward than all the loops I jumped through to get these two cemetery articles.
She just want to reassess them, still, she can get that cleaned up?
Yeah.
Well, let me see, I believe the ordinance articles are worded correctly. I put the roads together, other than Norton Mills. Okay, the last four articles. To get rid of the dozer, to get rid of the loader, and to get rid of the town garage. We haven't really talked about the number 24, but do we want that still on there?
Sure.
And then the last one to see if the town will authorize the town of Sangarville to be a rapid renewal town. That's town, 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 town. I can take the little one out again.
So with regard to the town garage, we, I guess, when asked, we're essentially going to share with them that there's been some interest.
Sure.
And it has been, it's actually been more than, there's been some discussion for a while from
From multiple people.
interested parties, yeah, yeah. So, yeah.
The only concern I have about that is that we, there's so much, there, it opens up a lot of questions as far as, and, and do we have answers to all those questions?
No.
If I can't, if we, it's no different than, you know, sell, to me, it's no different selling the dozer or the loader or anything. I know we have a couple of people who are interested in it, but we can't really have an official conversation or, you know, try to, what good does it do to have somebody come in and give the value on it so we can see what it's sold for if you don't have permission to sell it? It doesn't do any good to, you know what I mean?
You can't even negotiate.
Right, we need to get this done before you can keep going.
But we will have people who'll say, "Well, if you, what are you going to do with the sand pile?" Well, that would, obviously, we're going to have to have a sand pile. So we don't know how, how that will be remedied. It kind of reminds me a little bit of this old building and the proposal that we've been working on for a new building. They're not laid. What are you going to do with the old one? Well, we're going to have to cross that bridge once we build our new one. But they're not, you don't have to solve that problem. So obviously, we're not going to put the town in a position where it doesn't have a sand pile. But we don't know the remedy yet for that.
Right. Because I've, I've done a lot of thinking about it because obviously, you know, I was looking at the property and I did some research with regard to what it's costing us to own that. And how, you know, I don't know what we're talking about as far as what we would make if we sold it and whether we're going to sell some property with it or just a lot or... But it seems like, one, the town, the town doesn't need the money, right? I mean, we're, we're, we have plenty of money.
No, well, the town doesn't need to have property that's just sitting vacant.
Right, but I mean, I did some research with regard to how much, let's, let's say we put it back on the tax, on the real estate tax. It would probably generate about $800 a year as far as back to the town for tax. So then the question is, well, if we rented it, we could make $800 a month.
Well, if you're going to get into property management business, you might be able to lease it.
Right.
And that might be something to look at.
It just, it just seems like we have this building and we have this real estate on 23. And I, you know, I know we talked about the sand pile, maybe going up to McFeeters, which is residential. And I just, you know, and I, I drove by, looked at what's down there. There's culverts, there's, you know, obviously lots of stuff hanging around down there.
Definitely could use cleaning.
Yeah. And I, you know, I, I question that. So, but, but if the two are separate, then the two are separate, you know, that if we're not thinking that far down the line...
I'm not, I mean...
But how can you not? I mean, I mean, I guess...
Well, you would have to if, before you sold it.
Right.
Because not, until you got permission to sell it, none of this matters.
Okay.
That's how I'm looking at it, honestly.
Okay.
I mean, once you know you can sell it, all right, then you've got to sit down and figure out, all right, this is what we need, this is, where are we going with it and how are we going to handle it?
Right, right.
That's how I see it. But I don't want to waste a lot of time worrying about it.
Correct, if I can't, it's kind of like the loader is a, it's a valuable piece of equipment that is not being used.
Right.
It requires maintenance.
Yes.
It, we don't really need the money, but it's, it's not a good use of, of the town's resources to have $70,000 sitting in a piece of equipment that, that we're not going to use or maintain. So we need permission to sell it.
That is something that you're not ensuring and that there's that issue of who do you let use it? I mean...
Yeah, no, I, I understand that equipment way...
But I do the building the same way because we're allowing other people in there to use it. It's not being taken care of properly. There's, you know, the trash, Trashbusters hasn't picked up the plastic and sand pile for five years. Why? I have no idea. I mean, if they don't want to pick it up, we, maybe we ought to go to somebody else. But it's sitting right there by the trash and it doesn't all get picked up. So there's that, the scrap metal up there doesn't get taken care of, you know.
Right.
Maybe, maybe going forward, none of that stuff, why are we dealing with it? We hire a contractor to put a culvert in. Why is the trash coming back to us anyway? You know what I mean? I think there's a lot of questions, once you start into this conversation of...
I think the question on keeping it would be if you thought you wanted at least to have the option to get back in the public works business down the road.
Right, that's true.
If you thought that that is something you, maybe you'd want to entertain, then you definitely would, you hang on to it. So.
My only question was, because it took me by surprise that it was on the warrant, you know, because I think it showed up between our last meeting and this meeting. And that's when I did all the research. I was like, whoa, 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 let me just, you know, just all of a sudden, I was like, wow. That I'm concerned that there's going to be, well, I mean, there'll be, I guess, discussion and we'll...
They'll either say yay or nay.
As long as we, as long as we have a good reason.
Hasn't been used in years.
Right, but how much, do you know how much it, do you know how much it's costing us to keep it today, this year? How much it's cost us?
I don't know what we paid to oil last, I guarantee it's way more than I want to pay.
I mean, because insurance, yeah. I mean, I, I did all this research since, since, and, I mean, the insurance, anyway. I just want to be prepared. And it's the last, second-to-last thing on a warrant and all of a sudden, you know, there's this very long conversation and that we're not prepared to answer all the questions.
Like I said, I haven't dug into all of this because until I know we can sell it, I don't think it matters. I mean, we know we're heating a building, we're heating, we hire a contractor to plow snow and we're heating a building for him to be able to use it after. That makes no sense to me. I mean, we've been the insurance on a building.
How many years has it been now that we haven't been in the business?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you add all this stuff up and the building is just, it's getting in worse condition every year.
Right.
So if we're not using it, why do we want to keep watching it go downhill?
Well, okay, and that makes sense, that makes sense. I, I, that, that makes sense to me. The thing that I was thinking, because we had talked about the rev, the severance, how much will the town...
It seems like one or two separate questions.
Do you have tax math? Is that what that is? Can I see it?
And I thought, I thought if we take that money and put it in the bank at zero percent interest, real estate right now is a good investment. Now, you know, why are we in the business of investing money for real estate? But I just got to thinking about as far as where it is on Route 23 and all of that. So, you know...
I just see right now, it's, it's 26, 27 acres, that's a money pit. We just continue to put money in a hole with nothing coming back. And why do we want to keep putting money into something that we're not going to see a return from of any kind? If we get rid of it, we get, we lose the liability of the wetlands, we lose the liability of the building. It becomes somebody else's issue. They can maintain it, cure it, eat it.
Yeah.
Just 480 feet on McFeeters.
Wow. I didn't know it was that much, honestly.
Isn't that what it says?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Here, I'm just, because I have no, I haven't given this much more thought than either one of you because we don't have an offer.
I'm being unprepared, you know, I'm, I, because I don't think there's a why.
Here's a scenario. We've got $100,000 in the equipment account for the public works department, which does not exist and hasn't for several years.
Right.
So there's $100,000. If we sell a portion or this property and net another $100,000, we now have freed up $200,000 and we haven't raised anybody's taxes by one penny. That $200,000, let's move to the next project, our new town office.
Right, and that...
We could nearly pay for it if we simply unlock the value that we have tied up in this asset that we're not using. Now, is all that going to come to, but I think that's a discussion worth having.
Right. And I, I mean, I understand that, but I wanted to make sure that I knew the numbers and I think we should be prepared to know...
Which numbers?
Well, just how much is it, in fact, costing the town to keep that piece of property?
Well, we got $100,000 in the equipment account and let's say it's worth $100,000.
But we can unlock that equipment account before we, if we were to sell that, right?
You could, but if you still have it, perhaps you should keep it to maintain it.
That's what I'm going to hear, yeah, you're going to hear everybody say to that.
Which you're not using. But this, it's a good-sized piece of property, there's no reason we have to sell all of it.
Right.
And I, I can see this, who knows? I mean, depending on what the buyer is wanting to do, but we could really upgrade our situation, free up a lot of capital and move on, but maybe not. Convinced on what people will pay. I did not realize it was that big.
You get anybody who's going to buy that, it's going to be any type of business.
26.
26, yeah.
And there's over 400 feet on McFeeters. I didn't realize it was that much on McFeeters.
Between what that's going to, what that as a business property is, the tax valuation is going to go to. Say anything about personal property taxes of the equipment that will be there.
Yeah, that's the other thing, I think 800 is a way low number. Because if you come into $200,000 worth of value, they're not going to get a home state exemption on it. They're looking at three grand a year, right?
That's if we were to sell a whole piece.
Well, I mean, what if you sell 20 acres?
Oh, okay.
The value of that property is the building it's sitting on.
But, but in the warrant, we're asking if we can dispose of the town garage. I mean, I...
We can negotiate whatever
Land.[1799.58]
Land and portions and.
It's actually, it's two deeds anyway.
Easements, rights, right of ways, all of that could be, that's going to be part of what you work through.
Should say town garage property.
Yeah, and it's map. Right, it's, it's map twenty, block fifteen, it is.
Yes, two.
So you see that, Mike, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
But I would, if I had an opportunity to sell the rest of it. I would have a hard time not selling it.
And then, so that's the town garage lot. Right there.
Okay.
And this, but we own all this too.
Correct.
Yeah.
So map, which map is this?
Boy, there's a lot of frontage on both roads.
Right, well, that's, that, I was trying.
That's why it's not going to be an eight hundred dollar assessed value.
Right.
And it's all swamp.
No, but it's still frontage that.
I understand that.
And up here is very steep, I don't know how much of that, you actually have that four hundred feet you can actually use.
Right.
Without filling.
It's sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah. And you want lot?
No, I, I mean, I, I.
I put them both on there, it's up for discussion.
Oh, I, yeah.
Well, you don't know because you haven't been offered anything, right?
Well.
But no one's going to even talk to you if you don't have permission to sell it.
All right.
Sure.
And just because it's on there, don't mean you sell the whole thing.
And if you want to keep some of this, maybe you want to sell, you know, I don't know.
But at the end of the day, we're not going to leave the town in a lurch, we have, we're responsible for making sure we have a sand pile and a salt pile and all of that has to be answered.
Right.
But the building itself, I look at it, it's just like the loader, it's just sitting there, just.
Well, it's like the Abbey Fowler.
Yes.
When Abbey Fowler, when we got handed that, was a nice building, could have been used for something, years ago. This is no different, the longer that building sits, the longer it's going to be just like this.
Actually, the, the parallels between that and Abbey Fowler are exact.
And it's the same deal, they tried renting, it didn't work, that was a cluster, we're never going to rent again. That was a big hoo-rir at town meeting, so.
I would say property management is, the, the hurdles there are the same as having a public works department. We're so small that you can't have a management team, you know, like Bangor or Herman or, it just doesn't, and having one or two or one and a half hourly employees supervise themselves, we know, we've done the numbers, it doesn't work. So I don't see us going back that way, but that, if, there's going to be pushback on this, that's what it will be. It's, yeah, what about if we ever want to go back to a public works? That's, that's going to be your pushback and they might not vote for it. But if we share with them that people have been throwing around six-figure offers that they might be interested in this and we'd like to at least be able to vet it, some people might be interested.
But the same token with all that frontage, if you split it up somewhere else, it'd be very easy to put up a free, all you need is a two bay garage. You don't need that in the store, I'll say they got down there right now. And then you could actually do something, maybe they would heat a lot better than what they got. And not have all the liability.
This frontage here did, you said that's wetlands, this frontage here?
Yeah.
It is, so there's.
All the way down through there.
This too.
Right here.
Yeah, that's the other side of Lemieux's.
Yeah.
That's down by Lemieux down there. Yeah, when you drive down, that's all cedar swamps, the whole lane.
It's so funny, I can't even picture that, I was going to do that and I just didn't get a chance, but I did drive this and pace this off. Not piece it off, but you know what I'm saying? And, um.
That parts.
This is a swamp here. This part, I don't know how, it looks flat, but I don't know.
I've never been in the woods up in Jody.
Yeah.
But for me, honestly, I didn't realize it was that freaking big, but if you cut off, what if, you know what I mean? And I'm just throwing something up, no idea, but like up there, if you kept off that corner up top where Jody was just talking about, if we kept the section up in there, that's all we would need, we don't need.
You, you're familiar with Doe-Foxcross sand pile?
Yeah.
And they've got, they have other stuff crowded around it because they're trying to run public works out of that.
Right, across the street there.
But that's all.
It's hanging on a head, yeah.
Correct, that's just a cliff they built. Our piece of, that piece of land is better than what they have their pile on, right?
Yeah, I, I mean.
It's better than what Yofford had, I mean, Yofford, they built the garage up there, but it's the same idea as far as property.
Right, I mean, personally, I would, I would not like it there, I mean, I would not vote for that.
What difference does it make?
I don't want to see a salt sand pile when I drive out of my road.
All right, well.
No, I, but I'm just, I'm just, I'm just.
It's up to hell for you, Jody.
No.
Yeah, I mean, you can see it now when the leaves are off the tree.
Right.
No, whatever, but anyway, I'm just saying. I'm, I'm just telling you.
Well, okay, well, that would be one, and maybe, maybe the people around it would not want the sand pile closer to them than it is now. But it is certainly an option in terms of running the town.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, as far as, and, you know.
I think it's going to be hard sell, but.
Absolutely, nothing is easy.
If you don't.
We had two, popular people ask about it. It'd be way easier to say, no, the town don't want to sell it, well, I don't know if the town wants to.
Yes, sure.
That's what I'm tired of.
Okay, I, that's, that, that works for me, I mean, that, I wanted to make sure that I knew the answers to the questions because I don't want to let them know the answer, so, um, that's when I started doing the research.
So if I go fix this, you take a recess and it should take me ten minutes, max. And Morna wanted to tell us that I'd left off the active.
Oh, 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 okay.
Did you mean leave this off? I'm like, no.